Is Tony's?
Yes. She ran upstairs. Ready?
Yep.
Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Committee of the Whole of the Tacoma School Board, Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I continue to geek out, this is now our third Committee of the Whole. We're working through this process, trying to figure out how we can use it as a resource for us to have formal, informal conversation with one another. And for this evening's topic, the Board agreed to begin discussing our budgeting policy and strategy. I'll remind you that that topic came out of our retreat that we had a few months ago, and as we were setting Board priorities, there was an interest on on the Board's part to have more awareness in the budget-making process, and potentially some triggers where we would want to be included, or at least made aware of decision-making through the Superintendent's budgeting process and her team. And I am a process person, so there's a document before you for your consideration that I would use it tonight to help guide the conversation. But a reminder for us on the front page, really, how we come together and talk about things, and we're shaping our ideas, and then that will lead to a study session. There may be need for another Committee of the Whole, or another study session as we move this process to some sort of a final decision. And on the second page of the packet that I handed out is the template, and you may recognize this template, we used it. Castang, the facilitator at our retreat, used this to help us walk through some ideas. And a reminder that from the Board's perspective, we're really focused on the on the top four or five items, the vision of the work, specific objectives, expected outcomes, performance measures and progress. And then risks, we share in that, but that also then transitions operationally to the Superintendent and her team. Time, duration, and milestones, beneficiaries, ballpark costs, those are all items that would come back to us at a study session. So for us this evening, as we dig into the budget, really just having a conversation around the vision for the budget and specific objectives or outcomes that we'd like to see, focusing first on the policy and then on the process. And if you have performance measures, or how we track progress in mind, that would be helpful to inform the conversation, and any risks that you see. And then based on what we compile this evening, we can direct the Superintendent to come back at a later date for a study session with answers to those questions that we have. Does that make sense? Any questions or comments on the document before we start talking? Okay. Superintendent, anything to add before we get into the conversation?
No.
All right, the, so when we think about the budget, statutorily, we are required to pass a balanced budget. And we, over the last few years, have adopted a budgeting by priorities and a biennial budget. And appreciate Rosalyn and her team, because it is a lot of work to align our budgeting to our priorities and to the goals identified in this strategic plan. At the 11th hour of the budgeting process for this year, there were a lot of questions and concerns, and we have time parameters around that are driven statutorily around when we need to adopt a balanced budget. I think the tension that I heard, really, it was an odd budget year for us because of decisions made in the Legislature and the implications of those decisions, and last-minute decisions in the Legislature, and trying to crystal ball where they were going to land, and what the revenue side was going to look like, and how that would impact the expense side. And I think there were some programmatic cuts, and cuts to individual staff members or categories that caught the Board by surprise. And for us, we were able to honor our statutory responsibility of approving a balanced budget. And I think the argument was, we would always approve a balanced budget. And by no means does the Board want to take on the full responsibility of a line-item budget, that that clearly rests with the Superintendent and the CFO and her team. But that the Board needs to live with the politics of a budget, the political realities of a budget, for which we have almost no responsibility to put together, but a whole lot of accountability once it gets released. And I heard concern from each of you around individual budget items that we weren't made aware of initially, that as members of the public were starting to more scrutinize the budget, were identified, and then we were in an awkward position of not having enough time to fully understand why those cuts were made. Is it a loss of service, is the responsibility going to shift to another individual, another department? And at our retreat, came up with this idea of creating, of updating our Board policy on budget to potentially include triggers by which the Superintendent would notify Board members if there were going to be cuts to a program, or to staff, or to a certain category. Is that an accurate synopsis of our conversation? Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that? Or any launching points for us this evening as we dig into the policy?
I think the key-
Director Leon?
Yeah, a key piece you mentioned there of the why, so why certain places, departments, or people, or programs are cut, and why maybe some others grow, and the rationale behind that, so that not just we understand, but the public has a more understanding of it. Even though there were budget meetings in the community that we, there was a group of community members that came together, then there were also meetings in different high schools that weren't well-attended by folks. And then later on, people said, oh, you know, we didn't, we didn't get enough information. We tried to get that information to the public, but maybe a better way to do that, that comes in a timeframe and in a way that the public and, and we understand, better.
Any additional thoughts on the matter? Director Cobb?
By thoughts on the matter, do you mean just the framing for the conversation? Or are we digging into the conversation?
Either.
Well, I'll hold my thought, I have it, but I want to see where we go.
Okay. Superintendent, would you give us just a high-level overview of your budgetary process, and how you involved Cabinet, and to remind us all of, like, the budget doesn't just magically appear, it takes the better part of a year to put it together? What does that process entail?
So it's primarily, and Rosalyn, jump in, if I forget something, I probably will. But it's prob, it's primarily governed by the budgeting by priorities process. So, you know, as a Board, you've directed that the budget be formulated according to the major goals. So the process starts with every department coming together and filling out a budgeting by priorities sheet. This year was, it was, it was different because of the incredible amount of funds that we had to cut. So this time, this year, we did ask everyone 15% to take a 15, to, to initially, to look at your budget and to, you know, formulate it with a 15% cut. Now, it didn't mean that we were automatically going to just, I don't like budgets where we say, everybody loses 15%. But what it was, was a figuring point, so that people, we could see what would happen, you know, in each department if they, you know, if they lost that 15%. So everybody wrote, excuse me, everybody wrote their budgeting by priorities documents. And then actually, the leadership team, the Cabinet, came together on several occasions over many hours, and we went through every budgeting by priorities proposal. The finance team would come and gather with us each time, and they would keep track of, you know, we had different lists. We, you know, like you said, Scott, we didn't, Director Hines, we didn't know exactly what the number was going to be, so we kind of had a catastrophic list. If we, you know, if it comes to the worst, and we don't get any of this lovey money back, then this is what, you know, this is what will have to be on that list. And then we had another list that was, this absolutely can go, and we believe we can live without it. And so let's put that on, you know, that can-go list. We had a system of, we actually had a system of red, yellow, and green, and we start with, you know, everybody putting up a sign about, so what do you think about that? Where, you know, where do you feel, you know, in the priorities and, you know, meeting the needs? Again, you're looking at a, you know, a list of things that have already been, you know, committed. I mean, the budget, the budget person has said, you know, these are the things I need to do to get these objectives. And then we had that kind of middle list that said, eh, we're not sure about whether this can go or not, we need to really investigate that and look. And so that's how it started, and at that first brush was, you know, sitting down and looking at each one of those proposals. Rosalyn, how many proposals would you say?
About 200.
Two?
Maybe, well, 110 proposals that we identified this year.
Okay, so, you know, so a real examination, and for example, I would look at the ones that were under, you know, under the Superintendent, under anything that I looked at. And so we went through it through department, and actually, it was a Cabinet member that brought forth the budgeting by priorities piece, and said, here's what, here's what, I can give you, Paul Scott is under me. And so I probably, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't give examples. I think Paul Scott's a pretty easy one, so. Oh, not Paul Scott, Paul Walker, Paul Walker in auditing. And so, you know, Paul said, hey, I've got these many expenses that I really believe could come out of capital, they would, you know, they would look, you know, they could be subtracted from the capital budget and wouldn't have to come out of the general fund. So that gets me to this much of a percentage, you know, decrease. And then, then he also suggested he has a couple of interns, and they work so many hours, and he said, and then I think I can make up the rest by just decreasing the hours of the interns and reducing the amount of time they put in. And so I thought those were two really solid, good ideas. First, I was worried about the intern time, but then we talked about the new rule that says if you make this many hours, then you get full-time benefits. And so then we went back and said, okay, no, maybe it does make sense to decrease those benefits. So that's the kind of scrutiny, and then, you know, then we'd go around the room, and everybody would say, yes, there were plenty of times when one person would say, no, that is unacceptable, we can't do it, and others, and then we'd listen, and sometimes we'd change our mind, or sometimes we'd put it on the list to say, okay, we can't make a decision about that. So that basically was the first brush. And then each time we met together, we narrowed it and put things on the list. When it got down to the very end, we had to make final decisions, and none of them were easy. I hope, one of the things that, that you'll hear from the conversation is that we did not take anything frivolously. And there was nothing that we said, let's put more into that, there was none of that. We were deciding what we needed to cut, and there was a little bit of, you, you get into this thing, so do you cut? Again, if, if we just said, everybody cut 15%, it would have been ugly, but it would have been easy, you know? And but what we were trying to do is make thoughtful decisions about it. And so when we finally got final numbers, and we were looking at that, and we knew we had some lovey money back, then we knew we could go back to some of those red things and put them back in green, and, you know, go forward. Then, you know, there were definitely some creative solutions where, and most of those creative solutions came from the people who were supervising those departments, where they came back and said, hey, if we look at this a little bit differently, and instead of just cutting, you know, all of this entity, if we looked at trading this off, and, you know, and the other decision we had all along the way, and Lisa was, Lisa from Human Resources was really good about saying, because what we had to do, make sure we did at the same time, was if we're going to cut this accountant, then we have to decide who's going to do the work. And so we had to have a plan for that. And so all the way along, Lisa was keeping track of where that work was going to go. Who was going to do it, who was going to get more, who was going to get less? And then she was also keeping track of, what is the bargaining? You know, we've got 13 bargaining agreements, that every one of them would say something different about how you're, you know, how you're let go, when you get notified, how many days we have to give you, and so she was tracking all that. So it had a lot of moving pieces, and what I was proud about is that everybody took it seriously, it was, it was committed work. And then, I don't know, Rosalyn, you can talk about how, a little bit, how we racked it up. I mean, so what, how did, how did it go from that, those budgeting by priorities to the actual budget, you know? And it was, I mean, it was Kristen writing on the board, okay, here's what's going to go, here's what's going to stay, here's how it's going to go forward, and putting that in a budget so that we could look at it. And, you know, we kept making decisions, and the reason we kept making decisions is because it was dicey, it was not an easy endeavor.
I think that the only thing I would add to that is at the end, once, we had made some initial decisions, and we had had some some items that were predicated on what happened at the Legislature's close, and we really didn't know what the opportunities were with what would happen at the Legislature. We had a range, anywhere from we could be gaining millions of dollars to we could be losing even tens of more millions of dollars, just depending on whatever the circumstances were. And, and when we were done with the legislative action, I think that we had another $4 million that we had to come back to the table and cut. It wasn't the worst-case scenario, but it wasn't great either. And I think that that put us in a position where, towards the end of our budgeting process, we identified additional items, we then worked with the different departments to implement those things, there were notifications of staff implications that had to go out, we had to notify all of the people that we made reductions to. And there was a lot of sensitivity around how we go about doing that, how do we honor the individual, so that we're not embarrassing them, or putting them in a position where, you know, they are placed out in the public to have to explain what happened. And so in, in trying to honor people in the work that they were doing, and trying to identify all of those aspects, I think that we definitely missed a component of how do we make sure publicly that we're communicating what all of these implications are? And if I could go back and do it again, I would do it quite differently, I think, and find a way to bring more of a public voice into those eliminations. At the same time, there's such a sensitivity around how we communicate that, we made some pretty incredible cuts, $45 million or so is a lot of money to take out of a budget, regardless of how big you are. So, you-
I just had two other steps. Beginning in November of 2018, principals led a parallel process to start to identify the priorities that they needed to maintain in their buildings for support for academic achievement and supportive students. We engaged them, they played a tremendous leadership role, working with each other, looking at their budgets, helping to identify trends that really informed our decisions about even supports that were needed at the Central Office, or areas that we, that they could, if, no one was excited about any cut, so they had to prioritize the impacts in there. And the, the other piece that I would just encourage us to remember is some of the, what are perceived as increases in areas are driven by categorical requirements. So as a budget is developed, in funding, we may get categorical budget increases in title, lap funding that has very specific requirements to it. And so in the total picture, that means we may have to cut in deeper in other areas, but then be adding in, based on those categorical resources.
I, I have one more comment to make. We did come in January and express to the Board that there could be some potential implications for budget reductions, and you helped us develop a list of criteria with which to make reductions. And so that was always at the forefront of the conversations, and we brought those into our Cabinet detailed discussions, and tried to use that as part of our lens.
Director Cobb?
Just from more of a kind of step-back perspective, I know, because this is work that I used to do at OSPI, that there's this prototypical school funding model that drives a lot of the basic ed dollars to districts. But we've had this conversation already too, that categories like health services are funded at a level of basically zero, and family engagement funded at a level of basically zero. But we still have those positions in our district. So from like a, getting to thresholds, or getting to, I'm, I feel like I don't have a strong enough grasp on all of the drivers of staff that are clearly outlined in either policy documents, like our collective bargaining agreements, like drivers of teachers, because of class size requirements that are outlined there, or drivers of staffing for like our custodians, based on whatever drives that, if it's number of square feet, or if it's cleaning standard, I don't know what drives some of the staffing decisions that we have. And in some places, it might be a combination of decisions we've made about access to librarians or nurses, just generally. But then there's a student who has a very specific need, so that throws off the ratio, but it is driven by, that's a response to the student need. So I feel like in getting at thresholds, we have already made certain, we've already adopted through non, through policy documents, and include CBAs, we've already made some policy-level decisions about certain kinds of staffing minimums. But I wonder if, thinking through thresholds, I feel like I need to have those policy decisions in mind to figure out if there's another set of companion policies around these thresholds that we need to have in place that would then inform some of the triggers about cuts that we've talked about.
So maybe some kind of, I'm just, I'm getting clarification, so a cheat sheet or something that says, hey, here's what we have to maintain, and here are some of the parameters within which we have to work in order, you know, to get this, this budget done.
Yeah, and maybe too, in comparison too, for those staffing categories that are outlined in the protypical model, like comparison to what is funded, like what decisions we've made already in policy for that category of staff. And then maybe this relates back to our benchmarking conversation about goals, too. If we want to get to a certain place with nurses, or get to a certain place with counselors, it would help us, I think, see that a little bit better.
Right.
And I, just as Director Cobb was describing it, what I was visualizing was a matrix that just crosswalks those different funding elements, so we could see it contextually.
Okay.
So, vision for the work, the, under the, define the opportunity, we have Board understands budget implications, the pluses and the minuses, with enough information to communicate it with confidence to the public. How do you feel about that as a vision statement? Does that satisfy? See, he's nodding, I think that's a pretty good, like, vision of, of, of our expectation. And then, I'm going to jump over specific objectives and talk about outcomes. So what are some of the outcomes of this, of the budget process? Like, where are some of the reservations? And let me just stop and say, I feel 100% confident in the way that the work is getting done. I think by a number of metrics, to include, we win awards, awards annually by subject matter experts that scrutinize our process, and so, so I think, Rosalyn, under your leadership, and under the Superintendent's leadership, I think we have a sound budgetary process. I think we were challenged because there was a narrative out there that we were mismanaging money. And I think there is a challenge because the school budgetary process is super complicated. And, and I just look at, you know, the, what's the F?
195.
The what?
96. The budget 95.
Right?
95.
Right, so that's, and just, I mean, you want to talk about unable to make sense of anything, that's just a line-item, state-driven, bureaucratic. So for us to translate even from that document into a budgeting by priorities, so where I think there's real opportunity moving forward, and where I'm interested to hear from my colleagues on the outcome side, is what's, is it transition, like, what is, you know, and just in all candor, like, I don't feel an obligation, we've got subject matter experts that run our budgeting department that have degrees and advanced degrees in professional associations, and they go to conferences, and they are on the cutting edge. Like, that's, that, those are the folks that manage budgets, and those are people in the community that may be able to operate at that same level. And what I worry is that we get a lot of people in the community that say, well, I don't understand this, I don't understand that. And I don't know that we have enough time to ever fully explain it to everybody. But I also, around transparency, want to make certain that we are communicating it in a way, I guess I'm kind of kicking off the outcomes. I was looking to you, and I'm, but, but to me, an outcome would be, hey, it's a complex budget. So how do we communicate it? What's the right level of communication, so that the community understands what's in the budget, understanding that the actual budget is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages long? So, so an outcome for me would be that right level of translation between the very technical, specific budget documents, and a deeper understanding from the public about where their tax dollars are going. Other outcomes, people, Director Cobb?
Well, I can wait, if others have comments, I've talked already.
Sure, Director Leon?
I'm going to just add on to what you're saying. Technical, we, we don't want to overwhelm the public with technical data that they won't understand, we won't understand. So it's bringing it down to common lay terms on the top five or 10, and there's more than that, areas where the budget is, is how it's made. For me, they're complex, difficult places to understand.
Okay.
So, one of the things we did, sorry, was, I mean, one of the things that Rosalyn and I talked about, and we finally found, we finally found a prototype for it, but it was too late for this budget process, but was that whole, you know, the calculator, so that you could kind of look at and say, okay, here, here's the money that we have, and here's all the things we have to fund, and so build your budget public, you know, build the public, build the budget, and press the button and tell us what it looks like. And I think what it does do, we did it, what, 10 years ago? What it does do is it helps the public see all the different priorities that there are, and the finite amount of money. So like, if you've got a high schooler and an elementary schooler, where are you going to put, you know, where are you going to put the bang for your buck? So, I think something like that would, you know, would help.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Wenzel?
Okay, so in the past, we always cut every single year until you arrived, and we didn't have to cut for many years. And it was very painful, we would do 20 million a year, when our budget was half of what it was now. But we always had a list. Now, I'm not saying the list was perfect, and it didn't always include, so I'm not going back to saying they did it right before, because that's not what I'm saying. But we always had a list of possibilities, and then the Board went through it and said, yeah, we can accept this, like magnet money, you know? We'll put money in here, we'll take money out of here. But we had, you know, the Board had some discretion. So like, this time, we heard later that the career counselors were gone. Well, you know, maybe we would not have liked that idea if we'd been told specifically. So I just think to be given, you know, programmatically, we think, we have to be able to have a say, I think, as Board members, because we're the ones that get the heat when it's all over.
Okay.
So, so I'd like to see proposals, and you're right about the calculator, you, you list all the things that we have to do, and then you say, here's the discretionary money, and here's the things we can do, good bang for the buck, or whatever, you know? But it's not about the document, because that's, you know, pretty prescribed, and accountants do what accountants do, so I'm not, I don't have to complain about the document.
And I think, oh, sorry, Director Cobb, go ahead.
For me, I think it, your comments makes me lean in even more on the comment that I already made about seeing that crosswalk, because I do think, in some ways, we, we talked about our budgeting priorities process, and things that surface as priorities on a kind of annual basis. But seeing more of like those drivers of staffing, and the decisions that we've made there more clearly, and even understanding, like, are we trying to, on the counselor front, live up to the National Counseling Association's recommendation of a ratio of 1 to 250? Or are we trying to get to a standard of cleaning that is like every day for kindergarten through two, second grade, or, I think, for me, having that level of transparency around our goals for availability of staff to implement the programmatic choices that we've made, too? Like, making that connection, because implementing certain kinds of Title I or lap strategies drives a different need for certain staffing, or more inclusion requires a different need. I'm not saying that we need to be in the weeds on that. But I think there are already policy decisions that have been made around some of this, and just gauging whether there are additional, like, policy stances we want to take about, like, access to career counseling, or is there, is there more that we should be doing on the policy front, on the front end for some of this? So that it triggers the conversation just automatically, if the need arises to cut something that we've already established as a minimum threshold about the level of access to counseling that we want to see across the high schools.
So there's examples in policy governance where there's executive limitations that are established for like those kinds of thresholds. If there's a working category that is, ebbs and flows more than 5%, we need to know and have a voice in that kind of conversation. So there could be models that you might want to explore to those thresholds that combine the outcomes of, here's the transparency of the change in the core program that we are seeing, which is, here's all the big topics. which is here's all the big topics, the, all the budget, but for a public, here's what you're going to see as a potential change, good or bad. To Director Wenskill's point, you could have like those limitations that, well, if we're going to have changes, positive or negative, then here's where we want to see and still allows the superintendent to have flexibility within a threshold to, to be nimble and, and make changes during the year. So those could be kind of outcomes from a policy perspective.
I think that's consistent with the conversation that the board has had to date. See, four heads nodding.
It sounds to me in a way, but not completely the same, like similar to the requirement that Ms. Nolan has to like notify us about when, number of teachers that are teaching out of their certificate areas on it. I mean, we're talking about something slightly different, but it keeps it where, there's a point where we're aware. And maybe there's a point where we have to like act, but like having that built in, those built-in triggers.
And I, you know, I think that the policy governance piece is so important because for us, time commitment, right? So we have, on one hand, this desire to have an exhaustive knowledge of the budgetary process. And on the other hand, this isn't our full-time jobs. And I look at, I've spent a lot of time in government. I think probably one of the, arguably the best, most thorough budget process that I've been a part of is with Pierce County Government. And that operates, it's incredibly time intensive. At the department level, departments create budgets that roll up to the executive's office. And the executive's office scrutinizes each department budget. Then it moves over to the council side and the council staff scrutinizes the budget. Then they go into a retreat jointly between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And they go item by item by item, right? That's a pretty thorough process. And then they come to consensus and then they pass a resolution that the executive signs and the chair of the council signs. So is that a highly scrutinized budgetary process? Yes. Could that work for us? I don't see any way that could work for us. So I think what we have to, as a board, figure out is what is that right level of understanding and oversight of the board? And I think there is an opportunity, given performance measures and progress measures, to Director Cobb's perspective on the alignment of funding and the priority of funding. I think that there may be some opportunities for the board to provide guidance to the superintendent on the, on the budget and then to have thresholds or triggers when we're exceeding, you know, either way. Oh, we've got too much invested. You know, I don't know what that's going to look like, but I do like when Dr. Garcia talks about best practice that's out there for us to consider best practice and for us to figure out as a board how we have a balance between everything that's in the budget. I just don't think it's practical for us to know every single item that's in the budget to the level of understanding that Rosalyn and her team understands every single item that's in the budget. That just does not.
Yes, she does. She may not either, she might know broad categories.
I love them.
I, I like the trigger idea.
Superintendent Tornau?
I like, excuse me, I like the trigger idea because, and it kind of goes to what Director Wenskill said too, about you had a list, but especially if, if there's a combination of, hey, we're going to slip below this threshold and it goes along with what, you know, they all align. All right, so, you know, here's, here's what the state, you know, the state provides and here's what we need based on the needs of our kids. And so if we slip behind, below this number, then that's a trigger to the board. And then, you know, and then it does, it, it does need to trigger another conversation that if, okay, if, all right, no, that's not acceptable, that, you know, you went below, below that trigger and it's not acceptable with this and not acceptable. Then there's got to be another conversation about, you know, I mean, we were in a situation where we were going below a lot of trigger points, but we had no choice. We had to pick something.
General Counsel?
Yeah, thank you. We do have a policy in Regulation 6000 that addresses budget preparation, adoption and implementation. And the policy was last updated in 2000. The regulation was last updated in 2002. So I'd be happy to provide you with the was the model policies and look and see if there are some other best practice policies like Dr. Garcia alluded to as you consider whether or not you might want to make changes to policy.
Yeah, and that, I mean, I think that was what we, when we raised this issue as a priority at our retreat, we noted that the budget policy was last updated in 2000. And then given that our primary responsibility is around policy, policy setting, that at the very least, not that we have to go in and make changes, but I think we have to review it. And I think that gets us in a rhythm also of, then how frequently should we be looking at board policy? So I'm starting to hear items of interest and relevance that would be a part of a study session, looking at our existing policy, looking at was the model policy, looking at, at best practice in a policy governance environment. How do we create those sorts of triggers?
I have heard you say four outcomes. The first outcome is, is a process for the school district to be more transparent between the technical aspects of the budget and the highlights of any budget year change. The second outcome I've heard you say is, is some process where the board would be involved in a list of recommendations, pluses or minus for consideration. The third outcome is a matrix of current laws and CBAs that we must follow in, in the budgetary items.
I would say that from my perspective, it's not just that we must follow, but that we are implementing. Like what, we've made some decisions where there aren't probably policies.
Right, there's, there's standards, right? So we'll have the state requirements. This is what the state or the federal government would require for these particular purposes. And then there's also those with which the district has implemented on them, self-imposed. And then within each of those, there's different funding components. So we may have to spend that type of money for that particular purpose on this.
And if there are, like, we've made the decision, like, just a little note about like the rationale or what the, the evidence or whatever the guide.
The practice or the, yeah, I.
Assume for most things, there's like a rationale attached to why we made that decision.
There's numerous ways to accomplish the outcomes. I just want to try to make sure that we capture your outcomes.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, the way you framed it, just not the ones that are required, but the, what we're putting in practice currently.
You bet.
Thanks.
And then.
And I just add on because I had the similar interest. So I think that it is, when I said the matrix and the crosswalk was to that, if, if it's sourced with attribution, right? What are we doing? And then if it ties to a specific funding source or a law or, and then it may vary categorically or, you know, by, by funding.
You bet. And then the fourth one I've heard you, is some policy implications that address thresholds is the fourth outcome. Could be a policy revision, it could be a new policy, it could be something. But those are the four outcomes that I've heard you state, state.
Is that accurate? Four heads nodding, that's always a good sign. All right, so we've talked, we've had consensus on the vision, consensus on the expected outcomes. I think we've talked through some of the objectives. I would throw out that performance and progress measures. Well, are we too early in the process today to talk about those? Is there any, is there any performance and progress measure that's, that you want to offer today? Or will it be better informed through a study session and also through the board's work on the update to the strategic plan and benchmarks?
I don't know at this time.
I think the strategic plan will help us better identify those.
Director Cobb, any thoughts?
I think that we've already got some performance and progress measures established, like balance, being balanced, like the basic compliance measures. I think it is more of a conversation about whether or not we want to think of supplemental or additional measures to go along with just the basic financial compliance measures. I don't have clear thoughts about that yet.
And I think it'll also help, we're going to have a first reading tomorrow at the business meeting of our updated goals for the strategic plan. And we had, I think we're moving to add that fifth category that would be administrative. So I think the timing works out pretty well too for that sort of alignment. Dr. Garcia, did you have a comment?
Would it be helpful for us to bring you back to build on your comment? What are the current performance around and measures around the budget process? Meaning key dates?
Yeah.
By five, you know, thresholds, policy, current thesis? Would that be helpful to bring back in a study session for you to review?
Just to see them all, yeah.
Yes, please. All right, the last category on our template that we're using to guide the conversation is risks. Any risks that jump out?
Well, I think.
Trip points?
Okay, I'll say the better educated we are, the better we can explain to people why certain budget cuts or additions are there. So I think it's a win-win for the board if we understand it and if we're part of it.
I would offer, I mean, I, just to reiterate Debbie's perspective on, we're the ones that hear about it and usually it's when cuts are made. Sometimes people say, oh, hey, thanks for plus-ing up this item, this category. But more often than not, it's when cuts are made. And so I think as we as a board have made this commitment to trying to have more transparency is to calibrate expectations. So I think that there's a risk that the expectation may be, we're going to provide. Let me, let me say it a different way. Sometimes I think transparency sometimes is, that there may be a lack of understanding. And so a risk for me is that as we commit to being more transparent and want the public to understand, at times there may be parts of the budget that you still don't understand because they're very technical or they're formula-driven. So just trying to strike this balance so that we don't set ourselves up for failure where, you know, a risk I see is, oh, well, you committed to being more transparent, but I still don't understand every single thing that's in the budget or I disagree with decisions that you've made, therefore you're not being transparent. And I think where I hear this board going towards is, we want to be able to articulate priorities and investment in those priorities in a rationale. If there's cuts, if there's, if we plus up or, or cut a budget, that that's really what we're looking for. So how we say that going forward, I'm open to suggestions, but I just want to be really careful that, because it, it is so complicated. You start to unpack these budgets and it's formula, you know, we get the, all of us get the emails that say, well, why don't you just spend this money on that? Well, I can't, all right? I can't spend that type of money on this sort of program. It's super, and people go, that's stupid. Well, you know what? I agree with you, but those are the rules by which we have to comply. Director Cobb?
And to that point too, there are so many more things that we do that are not funded, like in a specific line item, like that it just don't have any funding source, state or federal, that you can just point directly back to, to say, that money, that amount of money went for this thing? Like even, I remember a comment coming through, public comment about school fields and play areas being open during the summer. It's like, we would love to have them all open, but the state or nobody funds summer facilities maintenance. So like there's this, there's this, and even during the school year, there are probably numerous examples of things that are not funded in any specific way, translation service-like. So there's that element of the whole of what we do being bigger than what's funded in any line item. So the people are easy to point to, but the, all the stuff that people see and want to be available doesn't have a clear tie back to a funded, a funding source. It's just how we deploy the resources that we get in a lump sum.
Yeah, that's a great point. Superintendent Tornau?
Well, and I think Rosalyn's process with the 40-people advisory committee. So they had a pretty detailed look at the budget and different things. But we viewed all the comments and you could tell that there was still a, a large misunderstanding from some people or just disgruntlement. I did, I wanted this and you didn't do it. And, or, you know, get rid of everybody in central office and then you can, you know, fund this. And so we have to be content or not, we have to understand that no matter what we do as far as explaining, there's always, there's going to be a, an element of people who are going to say, no, not good enough.
Any other risks that come to mind? Director Cobb?
I think it's not necessarily a risk. I think it's an opportunity though. I think as we get more transparent about those decisions that drive staffing decisions, there's open, there, you open the door for debate about whether the values are put in, put in the right places or the priorities have been created appropriately. So that's just, opens up the opportunity for another point of community-level discussion.
Can I try to capture what I've heard?
Please.
Risks? So please forgive me if you're watching at home that they're not the most articulated and captured there, but I've heard a few, that the board in the current model needs to have a better opportunity to be ambassadors for the why and the what of the budget. A more complete process to manage the accountability that they have for the budget. And so the risk is, is that we don't develop something that allows them to be in an, you to be in an informed manner to address that accountability. There's a risk in this balance between community understanding versus community agreement versus transparency. And the risk is that we haven't been able to manage that. And so they could be conflicting at each other. There's a risk if we can't explain how there is some work that is unfunded that we are still doing based either on our strategic plan or based on our community values. Hopefully those are in alignment. And the other risk that I heard is that as we get more transparent, there could be a potential difference, and not right or wrong, but difference in professional expertise versus a community want in there. So this balance of the superintendent and the staff from the, everyone that's hired in the, the school district's expertise to say, this is the best way. We should use this resource to achieve these goals versus a, maybe a, a community contingent that says, we want it differently. So that could be a risk in that transparency.
Sounds accurate to me. Any disagreement or additions?
Not a disagreement, but the discussion you started, you brought up a good point about the unfunded projects. So I think that, I guess you could look at it two ways as a risk. Some people could say, that's unfunded, why are you doing it? Stop. And then another opportunity would be, oh, didn't realize that was unfunded. Maybe, you know, these taxes that we're paying are worth it. Maybe we should pay a little more to have this really important service functioned by the schools.
And I think in our process, the, the idea of surfacing risks are not to deter us, but to help us think thoroughly through any recommendations that we make, any changes that we make, that we have thought through those potential risks and that will help us shape a better product on the other side.
All right. I think this has been productive. Is there anything else that any member of the board would like to add on the topic of board policy around budgets or process? I think now superintendent, deputy superintendent, do you feel like you have direction from the board to put together the study session? Because I believe that's coming soon, it's in November.
November 18th?
Yes. I like that Rosalyn has that committed to memory. She has circled that date on her calendar.
Put little hearts with it.
So may I ask a process question? So in that, we would bring back what we heard and some possible things for you to consider. We wouldn't be bringing back necessarily final answers.
No, I, I think the, the study session, we have requested of you a lot of information and that will come back to inform our discussions to lead towards those outcomes that we've identified. But I don't think after November 18th, we'll be ready. I think we'll be better informed moving forward.
Yes, and I'm just referring back to your process on your flow chart. So in that study session, we would be bringing back informations and things for you to consider, consider under those four outcomes. If that is shaping that study session, those four outcomes and what have we learned that could help you think differently to improve those outcomes? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Cobb? Yes?
I think so. Yes.
Vice President Wensko? Does that make sense? Yeah, I see Director Leon's head nodding. Yes. So then, just lastly, before we adjourn for today, in terms of, this is referenced in the opening, our third committee of the whole. We've never really had this sort of a, a format. I think it's a fantastic way to just sit and have conversation with one and one another, what's on your mind, what do you think, what do you agree with, what do you disagree with. And I don't want to overstructure committee of the whole, so now that we've had three of these, just having conversations with the, the areas of responsibility for us, vision, objectives, outcomes, performance measures, are we comfortable with that? I want the least amount of, my personal opinion is the least amount of structure, so that we don't over-process and have a chilling effect on the dialogue, because I would love for this to continue to be really heavily dialogue in what's on your minds, to inform study sessions. And sometimes we may have a committee of the whole and decide, we don't want a study session, we don't want to continue down the road, or, right? But is that kind of outcome-driven vision policy, does that work for people? Because we have a number of these committee of the wholes coming up, so that there's some consistency, so we all can come with similar expectations for how it's gonna work, and, so that it doesn't feel like it varies from one committee of the whole to the next. Director Leon?
Using this template for all the committee holes, I mean, not obviously this part, but...
Yeah.
These topics and idea drivers.
Okay, yeah. Keep, so that we're focused, so then we can, because my sense is that as we do a few more of these through this sort of a process, using the template that came out of the retreat, that then we'll just be, because remember when we talked about, we use this to get ready for the retreat, so that we could have informed conversations, to be able to come prepared. So as we have individual items that we're interested in, knowing that we would come to those committee of the wholes, prepared to talk about outcomes, objectives, vision, policy, those sorts of things. And then the, that will guide the conversation through a study session, and what that looks like.
So I think this has been really structured, and I'd like to throw something out. So if the superintendent could give each of us several million dollars to distribute however we like, like the county council does, the city council, wouldn't that be fun?
Sure.
Not sure you'd like it.
Rosalind, can you?
I'm really not sure you'd like it.
That would take a process, a policy change.
Yes.
The city council does that?
Yeah, they get some money, and the county council gets a lot.
They do CFR council fund requests?
Yeah.
Yeah. Board fund request.
I think, this, this is a tangential thought, but for some reason, something that you said made me think about it. Now that we have this committee of the whole structure, I think that associating responses to questions that come out of here, to this, to this as being the place where the question was generated, would be useful for me. Like, I'm thinking about the Friday report in particular, and like, committee of the whole response, or something like, that if it's not gonna be the response, or the follow-up isn't going to be delivered in a study session format, like, having some way of tracking your, like, the, the responses to the things that come out of here, or if it just flows into a longer-term process, like the strategic planning process, all fine and good, but if there's like a one-off response to something that comes, it would be helpful to track. I don't know. I'm just thinking about that.
I want to make sure that I understand in the, in there's, can I try to clarify?
Mm-hmm.
So we have, in tonight's situation, we have identified some outcomes, some risks, and so there would be a, a product that would be produced. We would potentially fill in that template, so that we would have something that could be visible, that you could see that says, well, here's what we, where we started to move, as a follow-up. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for good of the order from the board?
Don't be the study session.
Correct. Superintendent, anything else for the good of the order?
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
You.
[music]